Township, Parsippany Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, November 20, 2012. Public invited, public participation. Meeting called to order by myself, 7:33 PM. Please rise for flags. Luke? Mr. Nelson, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a minute. I'd like to take a moment of silence for everyone. Anyone that doesn't know, Lee Keimbo's wife, Grace, passed away during Hurricane Sandy. I'd like to take a moment of silence. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Ferrara.
Here.
Mr. Stanton.
Here. Others present: Mayor Barberio, Jasmine Lim, Business Administrator, Paula Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Inglisino Esquire, Township Attorney, Yancey Waziermich, Township Clerk. Purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council meeting, November 27, 2012. Formal action, mayor, may not be taken.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open space meeting law by filing the notice in this office of the Township Clerk and by the posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 15, 2011, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appears in both the Deli Record and the Star Ledger and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 19, 2011. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and are at Cablevision Public Access Channel 21. At 1:00 PM on Saturdays are also available for viewing at www.parsippany.net.
At this time, we'll be ministering the oath of office to Council-elect Jonathan Nelson. Oath of office will be given by Senator Richard J. Cody.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here. By the way, as a Democrat, I feel like I'm facing a firing squad, John. You got something better? I am? Well, by the way, it's good to see my good friend, Council here. Does a great job, right?
Yes, he does.
So, he finds out that I'm up here campaigning for this gentleman. Calls me up, says, "Dick, I'll bet you $1,000 he doesn't win." I said, "John, that's a Republican, Ben. I'm a Democrat. Guy go a lot lower, pal. He wouldn't go for it." So, anyway. But, thank you for having me here. It's a pleasure. Jonathan, all I can say before I swear you in is, as a lone Democrat, and I say this sincerely, your job is to watchdog, but there's no expression. Nobody likes the dog who barks all day and all night. So, you gotta pick your spots. You work with them when they're right, and when you think they're maybe wrong, you say so. And best of luck to you. And now with that, if you'd raise your right hand. I, state your name.
I, Jonathan Nelson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
Same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further.
I do further.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of councilman.
Of the office of council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Councilmen, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jonathan, can you sit next to me? I'm only kidding.
Just be quick here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm a little nervous, so I wrote the prepared words, because if I try ad libbing it, it's gonna come out completely different. Anyway, thank you, Governor Cody, for all your support and your dedication and devotion to the great state of New Jersey. There are a lot of people in this room where I want to say thanks to, but I'm afraid I'm gonna miss some names, so I just want to point out two people. And one is former Mayor Letts and former Mayor Piori, who's also here this evening. But most importantly, thank you to the residents of Parsippany Troy Hills, who have given me this great opportunity to serve on the town council. I've been hired to represent all the people of Parsippany and to help move us all forward together. Mr. Mayor and my fellow council members, I look forward to working with you this evening to tackle all the issues important to the fine citizens of Parsippany. I know we all share the same goal in making the township the best community in New Jersey, and I'm sure we all will work together closely to achieve that. I know there will be times when we agree and other times that we don't, but I do know that at the end of the day, we all want what is best for the citizens and for our township, and that's to be successful. In the coming months, serious issues, important issues, will come before the council. While campaigning, I used an old Ed Koch quote very often, every day I did, and it goes, "If you agree with me on nine out of the 12 issues, vote for me, but if you agree with me on 12 out of the 12 issues, better go see a psychiatrist." There are some who may not always agree with me, but know that my number-one concern is you and making Parsippany successful. We need to have a roadmap of how to achieve success. I campaigned on a vision, a concise plan, and an attitude of action, clear and tangible steps. We must do more than just ask the government to do things in a new way. We must ask our people to be part of the solution. As I traveled the township in every corner of Parsippany, I had mothers, fathers, grandparents come up to me and say, "Help us make this a place for our children to either stay or come back to." And they also said, "How can we help?" It is about all of us working together. Local government will not be the solution to our problems. 50,000 people working together is the key. And in that spirit, I am looking forward to getting started tonight and to move toward that goal. Thanks, everybody.
At this ti...
I just want to say, I'm going back to assets for every law.
We're taking a two-minute recess. You wanna wait?
Don't worry about it. Don't hang up me. God, he better.
At this time, we'll be taking a five-minute recess.
Second. Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Ordinances, second read in public hearing. Everything ready for next meeting?
Yes, Mr. Stanton, with the one exception with the request from the planning board to table, ordinance number 2012-36.
Okay, thank you. Status of adopted ordinances. Acquisition and purchase of properties located within the township through FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program 2012, column 35. Adopted date, October 16, 2012. Mayor's action, October 19, 2012. Effective date, November 13, 2012. Scheduled meetings: November 27, 2012, 7:30 PM, regular meeting, public invited, public participation. December 12, 2012, 7:30 PM, agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. Minutes for approval, reorganization meeting of January 3, 2012. Agenda meeting of January 3, 2012. Mayor's resolution. Mr. Karifi. Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills authorizing the extension of the property tax grace period until November 30, 2012. Whereas on October 27, 2012, in light of the dangerous pose by tropical storm Sandy, a state of emergency was declared by Governor Chris Christie. And whereas, subsequent to the declared state of emergency and due to the residual effects of Sandy, Governor Christie signed Executive Order 113, ordering the extension of the property tax grace period to November 16, 2012, and allowing municipalities the option to extend the fourth quarter property tax grace period by resolution of the governing body. And whereas, due to severe disruptions caused by the storm, the township wishes to extend a grace period for payment of fourth quarter property tax payments to November 30, 2012. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, that in accordance with Executive Order 113 issued by Governor Chris Christie on November 9, 2012, the grace period for fourth quarter property tax payments for the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills is hereby extended to November 30, 2012.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Mayor's discussion on sewer fees.
I'm passing the information out before I start, and I'm...
We have to go here for the public, if anyone wants to pick up.
In regard to the sewer fees, as you know, we have discussed lowering fees and a $1.5 million surplus give-back to the residents in the first quarter. All along, we've discussed the fact that once a sewer treatment plant was complete, that we would come up with a plan to lower the rate and also to give money back to the residents. I'm gonna allow, I'm gonna have Jasmine Lim explain the whole process, as well as Paula Cazarelli, because they worked on it, but this was something that we said we were going to do from day one, once the sewer treatment plant was completed. But let me say this. The sewer treatment plant does need a certain amount of surplus, and I can tell you right now, after the storms, Hurricane Sandy hit, we realized that we need to have a certain amount of surplus in that sewer treatment plant for several reasons. Our sewer treatment plant was almost compromised during that storm, and that would have been a travesty to the township of Parsippany Troy Hills. We were under dire emergency at that time. We were, at one point, and I think this is important for the residents to know, 12 hours away from the infrastructure in Parsippany possibly failing. There was a lot of calls from residents to get the power back on, but there was priorities that had to be taken care of, and the sewer treatment plant and the water department became priorities, because they lost power. And I have to give a lot of credit to the Office of Emergency Management, as well as to the department heads and the sewer department, as well as the water department, for all they done to make sure that we weren't compromised, because if our infrastructure is compromised, it would have been a huge state of emergency for Parsippany. And I do want to make, I wanted to just tell you this one story, I think it's important to know. The Friday after the storm, and we prepared for this storm, we had abundance of fuel, but during the storm, we had to run a lot of generators, and the fuel was being depleted. And as everybody knows, fuel became scarce, not only for local residents, but for the township of Parsippany Troy Hills. Tankers were underwater in the ports, so they couldn't get fuel to Parsippany. As of Friday, we had only 800 gallons of diesel fuel left to run the town. So, we had some situations that we had to handle immediately. And I want to tell you right now, there's a company in town that we should be, I'm very grateful for, Wawas. They delivered to us, 8 o'clock on Friday, 6,500 gallons of fuel, so our infrastructure could run properly. And I gotta tell you, as the mayor of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, we owe a lot to Wawas and what they've done for Parsippany. And from that point on, once we got back on our feet, which we were immediately, the fuel started to come, everything started to calm down with the governor's orders to ration, and everything pretty much worked out very well for Parsippany. But it made me realize one thing, we do need to keep a certain amount of surplus in our sewer treatment plant. You cannot deplete the sewer surplus. If you do, there's no contingency plan, there's nothing available for you to grab onto during a state of emergency. And this is why we're proposing what we're going to propose tonight, a 10% decrease in the rate, and also a $1.5 million rebate in the first quarter of 2013. So, from here, I'm gonna let you take over, Jasmine.
I'm gonna start with the give-back, because that's a little bit easier. The give-back is allocated by category residential, garden, apartment, and commercial in the same percentage that the revenues were brought into the sewer plant. So, if you look at column F on the top, it's highlighted in yellow, those percentages that came in as revenues are also going to go out as part of the $1.5 million give-back. Exactly, you'll see the exact same percentages in column F down below. So, that's the allocation of the $1.5 million to the users. And what it boils down to is a $49.73 rebate per residential unit, $48.53 per apartment unit, and $1.14 per 1,000 gallons for commercial entities. Questions?
Yeah, just one. How much does that leave in surplus?
It leaves, it still will leave 6 million surplus, and that doesn't take into account what we will use, what we used. Actually, my numbers are only through 2011, so...
That's a ballpark number.
We used, yeah, we used, but we used another, I think we used another $2 million in 2012 out of the sewer surplus, so. So, it would bring us down to about 4 million surplus.
And our bonding companies are happy with that?
Yes.
Or satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay.
And one of the reasons why we need to keep between 5 and maybe 4 or 5 million is because there's a process in the sewer treatment plant called dewatering, and it's a very, how Phil Bova would say, the director, it's where they, you know, they separate the sludge and the water. If that process ever failed, and it can fail, that right there is like $4 million right up front. So, we need to keep enough money in the sewer, in the utility, to offset any type of emergencies. And during the storm, believe me, there was a lot of issues with our blowers, with our, you know, things that were going on, because if it would have failed, we would have lost revenues, like you could not imagine. But that being said, since it didn't fail, since we were proactive in the approach that we took, we took other town sludge as well as an emergency, because they had nowhere to put it. Their systems did fail, but ours didn't, and we helped out a lot of our neighbors and within the state.
Well, we had a lot of damage caused by the wind, but we were fortunate that we didn't get the rain that they had promised us. Lower Lake High Water was very, very nervous again.
And, you know, and as a steady flow of information is gonna be going out on our Facebook page, that's been up now for three weeks, and our webpage, as well as the Parsippany Facebook page, on updates on Hurricane Sandy. Also, on December 11, we're gonna have a briefing from the Office of Emergency Management to the Township Council, and what took place that night, what took place during the whole course, and what the township had to do to keep the township afloat. And, you know, our administration and the Township Council, we always remain open to the residents, and even those that are suffering right now from Hurricane Sandy. I was gonna do it tonight, but Captain Storms has been busy with FEMA, because there's a lot of residents in town that had a lot of damage from the storm, and it's hundreds of people in the town. So, he's been really dedicating his time to that, and it's really important for the township to make sure, or even for the township, so we can be reimbursed to 75% from FEMA, to be up to date, and I have to say, Captain Storms has done a great job. And that being said, not just Captain Storms, Captain Karifi did a fantastic job, as well as Chief DeZenzo. You know, a lot went on that night that a lot of people don't understand. We lost all our traffic lights within a two-hour period. We had, we virtually had no, we didn't have the resources right there and then, but we did what we needed to do. I have to tell you, Captain Karifi and Captain Storms, they got everything on track within hours, within hours. It was fantastic. Our volunteers, the same thing, they were manning a lot of our, the posts and the lights and stuff like that. Major lines went down where you couldn't even, you could not even get to certain areas in Parsippany. We had areas in Pudding Stone that were, you know, residents have no way to get in or get out. So, I have to, you know, I know you're hearing a lot of negative stuff about Georgia Central Power and Light, but let me tell you, they came to the rescue for Pudding Stone and that road, and that was a concerted, that was an effort between both the OEM, them, and the administration to get them there immediately, because when roads are blocked and you have no way to get in and out, that means we have no way to get any emergency vehicles in and out as well. And that's what we were faced with that night, plus a host of other things. You know, you had, we had to go around to see what houses were damaged, if anybody, anything was life-threatening. And I have to say, a lot of the social media that was put out, a lot of people responded to it, and, you know, with the smartphones and all that kind of stuff. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect, because not everybody has smartphones. So, you know, we did, you know, we went door-to-door at certain levels where we had no choice but to go there. But on the whole, when you get the briefing on December 11, you're gonna realize how committed, how available, and how accountable the OEM was, not only the OEM, but all our volunteers, our CERT team, EMS, Rescue and Recovery, all the fire districts in this town. It's amazing how you just band together for the residents of Parsippany Troy Hills. But I have to tell you, it was a tough, tough two weeks, but I'm proud of what Parsippany Troy Hills is built of and stuff like that. So, that being said, I thank you, Council President, for the time.
Thank you.
And also, with the sewer, I'm pretty excited with the sewer surplus to decrease, and in the future, we're gonna see if we can even decrease it more as time goes on. So, it's not just, hopefully not just this year, we can do it again next year as well, and get the rates down to where they should be. But that being said, as you know, our energy costs decreased close to 60%, which is a, which was great for the township and its residents. Thank you.
Administration, Jasmine?
Do you want to go over the rate reduction?
Yep.
That's the lead. Basically, the 10% reduction is on, for the residential units, is entirely on the fixed rate. So, what we're proposing is that the fixed rate for residential units be decreased by almost $10 a quarter, so that's $40 a year that single-family homes will save. And then, for garden apartments, again, it's close to $10 decrease, so both would go down to $51 per unit per quarter. On the commercials, the decrease would be 90 cents per 1,000 gallons. So, the decrease would, it would be, the final rate would be $5.14 per 1,000 gallons. And as the mayor mentioned, this is conservative, we really wanted to make sure, we ran some scenarios for 10, 15, and 20%, and we decided at least this first stab at it, that it was really safer to stay with, stick with the 10%. And if next year, or in 2014, it looks like we're building that surplus back up, we can reduce the rate further and also issue another rebate, if that's what the council chooses to do.
Sounds good.
All right. So, in terms of the give-back, we don't know yet whether it has to be by ordinance or by resolution. If it's by resolution, we'll do it next week. If it's by ordinance, we'll introduce next week. And the rate reduction is definitely by ordinance, so we'll put it on for introduction next week.
Two things I just wanted to say, I'm very happy about this. I know this is something that I've been pushing for since we did the budget back in March and April, so I think this is very good. It's a very good step in the right direction for giving some of this money back to the resident. The other thing, another topic, just in reference to the storm, I know a lot of people, we had a lot of people that had a lot of damage and stuff like that. Is there any way we can maybe look into waiving permit fees for people that had damage to their houses, because if that's gonna take a long time, or, you know, or waiving the permits, so that these people can get their houses fixed, especially with the winters coming?
We can, I would have to find out from the attorney, of course, if we can do that, because we're no longer in a state of, under a state of emergency. But that being said, I think there's one fee that we can't really waive, and that would be that if someone was disconnected from Georgia Central Power and Light, you need to have a permit for that, because if not, and they hook it up themselves, they can create a lot of, you know, unsafe conditions on their house. Anything to do with safety and welfare, waiving a permit, I wouldn't recommend, but...
Are we talking about waiving fees?
Or any, anything that we can do just to help these people, so that they can get the process going quicker?
Yeah.
And get their houses fixed.
The state has already notified the municipalities that if the municipality decides to waive any fees, that the state fee is also waived, that they will waive the state fee, the state portion of the fee. I just, I never really looked at it in detail, so I'm not sure how long that period extends to, where we can waive the fees.
I know we just have a lot of people that have extensive damage.
We can check into it and get back to you next week.
Okay.
You make a good point, Councilman. As of today, you know, with Captain Storms, I mean, there's hundreds of people have damage in the town.
Okay, administration, Jasmine, everything set for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Lease agreement resolution, Mr. DePiero.
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills authorizing a lease agreement with the Camp Meeting Association of the Newark Conference of the Methodist Episcopal Church. Whereas the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills desires to acquire space to store township equipment in a safe and practical manner, and whereas the township has identified suitable space on the premises identified as Block 35 Lot 6 on the tax map of the township and located at Dickerson Road, Mount Tabor, New Jersey, and whereas the premises is owned by the Camp Meeting Association of the Newark Conference of the Methodist Episcopal Church, and whereas the Camp Meeting Association of the Newark Conference of the Methodist Episcopal Church has expressed an interest in leasing the premises to the township, and whereas in consideration for the lease, the township shall pay a biennial rent of $1 and shall maintain the premises, and whereas the Camp Meeting Association of the Newark Conference of the Methodist Episcopal Church shall continue to have use of one garage bay located on the premises, now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, County of Morris, and State of New Jersey as follows: One, that the aforementioned recitals are hereby adopted and incorporated herein as if repeated in full; and two, that the mayor and township clerk are hereby authorized to execute and witness a lease agreement with the Camp Meeting Association for the lease of the property owned by the Camp Meeting Association of the Newark Conference of Methodist Episcopal Church identified as Block 35 Lot 6 on the tax map of the township and located at Dickerson Road, Mount Tabor, New Jersey. So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Engineer report, engineer report of November 2012, all items listed, no change. Applications, license, 2013 renewed licenses, amusement games, entertainment, taxi limo, tourist accommodations, truck terminal. All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain motion open to public hearing. Make a motion. Motion by Mr. Karifi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. I'd like to open this to the public now, you'll be given five minutes to speak. If you're gonna come up and speak, please come up to the front row, too, please.
If you're gonna come up and speak, please come up to the front row too, please.
Roy Mesmer, Ten Drummond Drive, I've got quite a bit to go over tonight. But if anybody wants to buy this book, I have a sign by the Governor. I would never do that. Again, Roy Mesmer, Ten Drummond Drive. Brian, I want to publicly say, you are a gentleman. And with that said, with that said, I am a bad Republican. I think you understand where I'm coming from. Yesterday, I want to share with everybody here tonight, and who's gonna be watching this on TV, yesterday I ran into a graduate of Parsippany Hills High School, was very close with a 2011 graduate of the same high school, who was a Marine, currently deployed in Afghanistan. We have several young men and women, well, I don't know of any women, quite honestly, but I do know of several young men from our town, that have been deployed over there or are currently there. So I asked him, how is Sam doing? Sam lives in Glacier Hills, by the way. And his response was, he's been deployed, I know he's deployed in Afghanistan, but he was, he's been deployed for three months, and he's had two showers. I'm not gonna say much more about this, except I did speak to a couple of newspaper reporters over the last couple of weeks about, with the upcoming holidays, and I know they come so fast, and what we just went through and everything else, but we can't forget about these men and women, is that I would love to see our school system and the administration take this on, that grownups, children, write letters and send these to these soldiers, and Marines, and sailors, and airmen, because they want nothing more but hard copies. They don't want emails, they want letters. Because when they're in battle, and they're coming off a battle, or, or a mission, they love to touch something and read it again, and again, and again. And if you're not aware of that, then you haven't had, you haven't served yourself, or you don't know anybody that's in the service. Next topic. Tonight I thought it was gonna be a packed house, because of Sandy, because of the number of phone calls that I received, but it's not a packed house. But then again, I'm not surprised, people talk a lot. But I would suggest, Mayor, I'd love to meet with you, and if you need one of the Council people, and talk about something that we had during World War II and other conflicts in this country, but I like to call it a civil disaster program slash town team. Because with communications down like we just had with the Sandy and the other two storms, people like myself, who are in decent shape, run and walk 50, 60 miles a week, I could knock on people's doors. And if we set up a team like that, because we always talk about our neighborhoods, neighborhood schools, you know, whether it's Glacier Hills, Sedgfield, I could go on and on and on, you know, Rainbow Lake, et cetera. You get a person or two, not county committee people now, different people, and go to doors to help you guys, to help this town, to bring people together. Because these last three storms, I saw the best of some people, and I saw the worst of some people. Okay? And I'd love to get together with you, I know I only get five minutes. Next thing, I'd like to read something that's not gonna make all of you that pleasant here tonight. Couple of weeks ago, there was a college student here who forwarded this on to me after he observed this meeting for his course. And I just want to read, I know my time is precious here, but, "When I was at the council meeting," this is what this person wrote, "When I was at the council meeting, I was surprised at the way people on the board were acting during the meeting. A lot of the time, I thought some of them were zoned out. They looked as if they were somewhere, they, they wanted to be somewhere better. I noticed that, I felt like, why am I even here? It seemed like they don't want to be here, so why would I care if I'm here? If someone had something important to say, and I had five minutes of public discussion, I would want to feel my voice was being heard. I would want the people I am talking to to look me in the eyes at all times, either nod in agreement or shake their head in disagreement." Leading up to my next point, democracy in America? At the meeting, I felt there was no democracy. I felt like at no point during the meeting, the politicians listened 100% to what somebody had to say. Some of them were talking to one another during a presentation. I was presenting, if I was presenting, I saw that, I don't know what I would do. I should not even be writing this in this paper, because this is absolutely no reason that that should have been happening." Just wanted to share that with you. Next, oh, I gotta go fast. Okay, next thing. You know what I brought up back in June, that I thought we had, quote-unquote, "unpublicized," I don't want to say illegal meeting, but unpublicized meeting. Well, after that meeting in June 2012, that was not publicized, I have a prepared statement here. In the, in the June 2012 meeting, where it was not publicized, you choose a broker for the town's employment benefit. At that time, I said it was an illegal meeting. I got curious as to what the rush was, so I did an investigation. I Googled both brokers that you've had for the past six years, followed the money I Googled. I found nothing on Axis Point or its principles. What I did find on Fairview and the principles was a ton, and I mean a ton, of political contributions. I printed a few, but I didn't want to waste my paper, just to name a few. They raised $230,000 for Hillary Clinton. They raised $25,000 for Patrick Kennedy this summer. Donated to the Jersey City Board of Education this spring. Fairview was awarded the contract. Not only were they awarded the medical and prescription, et cetera, they were awarded other parts of the insurance. They were also awarded the property and casualty contract through our new JIF, our Garden State JIF. I guess who is running for Mayor next year will be looking to raise money. I leave you to draw your own conclusion. My time is up?
Yeah.
May I please respond to that?
Yes, sure.
When you make those innuendos, well, you really need to be careful when you make those types of, I guess, how do you say, opinions, because that's all it is, and you know, everybody has opinions, and they're just like, you know what. And the fact of the matter is, you weren't in interviews, I interviewed everybody, and the RFQ went out, anybody could have came to that imply. First of all, I didn't like having two brokers to begin with. And I said that in 2010 when I walked in, you can ask Jasmine. I never thought you should have two brokers when it came to that. So, fact of the matter is, I, without insulting the other broker, which I don't want to do, because I know that broker's been going around talking to you and other people as well. So maybe you're here on her behalf, or the company's behalf, but I find that unprofessional. Thank you. Not on your part, on that part, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the other thing is, there is a, a pay-to-play ordinance in Parsippany as well, so that, that regulates what vendors can contribute to candidates running for office in Parsippany. And Fairview, as well as every other vendor, is subject to that ordinance, which has very strict limits.
And that's $300 calendar year. And, and that's, you need to, you need to understand that, that if they give more than $300, they're disqualified.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public session.
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Ferrara. Second by Mr. Karifi, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
For...
The motion to go, no, no, it was not my request, as I understand it, there is a personnel matter to be disclosed, to be discussed in closed session, so the motion should be to discuss personnel matters, to, to obtain legal advice and attorney-client privilege communications.
Motion by Mr. Karifi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferrara, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, resolution, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, public law, 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of public from meeting in certain circumstances, whereas Township Council, in the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss personnel matters of attorney-client privilege, whereas minutes will be kept, once a matter involving confidentiality above no longer requires confidentiality, minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by Township Council of Parsippany Troy Hills that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Ferrara, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Make a motion to reconvene?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Ferrara, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes, now entertain the ultimate motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Karifi, roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Good night, all.
Good night.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, that's right. Happy and healthy one, Paula.